We're gonna go to the special meeting of the Glendale City Council for November 5th, 2019. May we have roll call?
Councilmember Agaganyan.
President.
Devine.
Here.
Carpetian.
Here.
Quintero.
Here.
Mayor Najarian.
Here.
Will you please read the report?
The agenda for the November 5th, 2019, special public meeting of the city council is posted on Thursday, October 31st, 2019, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. And the first item?
City manager regarding legislative update, governor's action on state legislation, 1A motion to note and file report.
Ms. Beers.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, I'm going to ask David Jones, our lobbyist in Sacramento, to please provide us with an update regarding the governor's actions on the state legislature and get any feedback that the council may have and any recommendations that you may have for next year. With that, Mr. Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members. I want to first say, tell you something you already know, you have fantastic staff. We've met with them for the last two days, got great ideas for going forward on grant opportunities, electrifying buses, and making other changes and watching out for legislation. I'm gonna give you a brief overview of what transpired in the last year, and we had, of course, a brand-new governor, and so this was kind of a first time around the block for him. He was not a legislative body, so this was a pretty new job for him. The good news is, and I don't know if we have the PowerPoint. Bear with us. There we go. So, the good news is Glendale took positions on about 40 bills, and the governor sided with us about 67% of the time. So, that's a pretty good batting average for the city of Glendale. So, we had a number of other clients that didn't do half as well as you did, so you should be happy about that. There were 2,600 bills introduced, as it shows up there. It was, over 1,000 made it to the governor's desk, and so he had a very heavy workload, and like most legislators, they procrastinate very well. So, the majority of those bills were dumped on his desk in the last two weeks of the session. So, he had to make a lot of decisions on very complex things, and he didn't have a lot of time to do so. So, a lot of his staff are relatively new and unseasoned, didn't come from the building, so there was a real learning curve that we observed from some of the actions in some of his bills. Of the three bills that the city of Glendale sponsored, we have, we got one to the governor's desk that was signed, so the rent notification bill was signed by the governor, so that's good news. The other two bills that we had, one dealing with Section 8, our tax credits for landlords to accept Section 8 folks, that died in the Assembly Appropriations Committee, mainly due to fiscal concerns. So, that was not a big surprise to us. It was $58 million for a three-year program, so that was killed for fiscal concerns. SB 532 was a bill that made it to the governor's desk and was repurposing or allowing the city of Glendale to use stranded redevelopment funds. Very disappointed in the veto there. We figured that with $27 million, we could build 400 affordable housing units for the residents of Glendale, so very disappointed. We were not alone. Santa Cruz had a $10 million similar issue, and they also got vetoed. So, with that, I think I'm gonna turn it over to Kira, and she'll go through the real meat of the order here, and then I'll give you a look forward for the next session.
Good afternoon. I'm gonna jump forward here. So, I just wanted to do a quick overview. We talked a lot yesterday when we met with you about a number of very specific bills. I wanted to touch base very quickly on the state budget this year. The final $215 billion budget contains significant funding for housing and infrastructure for local government, included over $2 billion in one-time funds to help with the homeless and housing needs. We talked with your staff about a couple of different opportunities in terms of some grants that we think that you'd be good candidates for. There was also $300 million in disaster preparedness. That includes some funding for wildfires and other programs that will be helpful. 10 years and up to $130 million for safe, affordable, clean drinking water. This is, that was a part of legislation that was worked on by GWP over the course of the year, dealing with clean water. There was a billion, over $1 billion allocated for greenhouse gas reduction fund spending. They, state paid down $4 billion in supplemental payments to reduce the state's CalPERS and CalSTRS liabilities. And there was also $98 million in state-funded health insurance for undocumented youth. More specifically on bills that we were paying attention to and really watching, one of the big ones was AB 1482, and this deals with the rent caps and just cause eviction. And so, this was a bill that went through towards the end of the year. It was a deal with the governor. There was also SB 330, which is the Housing Crisis Act of 2019, and this deals with preapplication and for new housing, and also freezes fees on those new developments for a period of five years. AB 1763 dealt with density bonus and affordable housing, and this is a bill that we watched closely. It deals with 100% affordable housing projects and gives additional bonuses to a developer that can manage to make that pencil out and work. And finally, there was a bill on workers' compensation and presumption. That was a bill we opposed that was ultimately signed by the governor, and that bill provides a new workers' compensation presumption for people that have PTSD in law enforcement, and so they will now have that presumption in place for them. One of the critical areas that we've talked a lot about and will have some pretty good significant impact in communities across California are the new laws regarding the accessory dwelling units and the junior accessory dwelling units. There were, there were five bills total, three of them were very focused and became kind of the three big ones, and those were AB 68, AB 881, and SB 13. And ultimately, because it was signed last, AB 881 by Assembly Member Bloom will have the controlling language on the ADU information. The one thing I just want to make, as we go through these bills fairly quickly, I just wanted to make sure that you understand a junior ADU deals with an ADU that is connected to the original home and is 500 square feet or below. A regular ADU is above that and does not necessarily have to be connected to the original The new laws on ADUs provide a number of different things. One of those is a ministerial, a ministerial nondiscretionary review and approval for certain ADUs, and there's a whole list and details, but suffice to say that cities will have to act on an application for an ADU within 60 days of receiving the completed application if there is an existing home or multifamily dwelling on the lot. These are going to be ministerial applications. The rental, when you talk about short-term rentals, the rental of an ADU must be longer than 30 days, and we cannot, and there's a provision that was, cannot be required to correct non-conforming issues. This is dealing with all, there are a number of ADUs in California that were already there that were not permitted. People converted garages and things over the years. They want to give them a little bit of extra time to come into compliance if they're non-conforming or if they have some issues they have, especially if their health and safety or other issues. They're trying to get them into compliance. And so, the law gives people that have older ADUs that did not permit them properly additional time to take care of those issues.
The question was, what is that additional time, about five years?
No, no, I think it's, I'll have to pull it for you, but it's not, it's like days. I don't want to say it's maybe up to about six months.
It's somewhere in this.
Yeah, I can, I will pull that information and get, yeah, I'm happy to pull that language.
Okay, thank you.
The new laws also include new development standard. We cannot going forward impose minimum lot size requirements. The minimum size of an AD, of an ADU, not a junior ADU, and this is the distinction, cannot be less than 850 square feet or 1,000 square feet for an ADU with more than one bedroom. The outer end of an ADU is about 1,200 square feet, so you're talking really, these are pretty small units. And we cannot impose standards on lot coverage far, open space. There's a number of new requirements. 16 feet in height is gonna be the maximum, four-foot rear and side yard setbacks. We also have new provisions relating to parking. If onsite parking is removed to allow for an ADU, onsite parking does not need to be replaced. The other interesting amendment that was taken in the ADU laws is that we cannot require parking if the ADU is located within a half-mile of walking distance of public transit. The key there is walking. There are a number of, we've talked about land use laws and housing laws in the last year that talked about a half-mile from public transit. They didn't include that walking piece, and that's important because you may have had a freeway in between you and, and the public transit. They wanted to make sure that it's actually walkable. Another key provision, we can no longer require owner occupancy for either the primary dwelling or the ADU. This is a five-year provision. It will go away in 2025. And then for ADUs that are 750 square feet or less, we are no longer able to require impact fees or QMB fees. If they are above 750 square feet, then it is proportional to the original dwelling. So, if you had a 2,000-square-foot home and then you have an ADU of 1,000 square feet, you would have a proportional charge for your impact fees and QMB fees for that ADU. And then there was a provision put in place by a bill by Assembly Member Friedman, and that was AB 587, that also adds provisions regarding the sale of an ADU, and this is a little bit of an exemption from the, from the larger laws, but also important. We've talked, talked about a lot of different issues on ADU, so I was gonna stop here and see if there are any questions.
Mr. Quintero.
Do any of the laws deal with setbacks?
So, they do have a four-foot setback, yeah. We'll go back to.
Four-foot side and rear setbacks, that's the most that we can require for new, new detached ADUs.
And no, how about limits on heights?
So, the limit that's in place is a 16-foot height.
I have a question for our city attorney. We've been collecting impact fees on our ADU applications up to this date.
So, you're right. So, for the fees that have been collected to date or have been paid pursuant to a permit issued prior to the effective date of this statute, which would be generally first, won't be affected. The city will retain those revenues.
Was there already found on that?
No, we're looking at the, what the impact is of the provision that the owner can't be required to live in either the primary unit or the, whether that, for those existing units that are subject to one of those covenants, whether that remains in place. I think it does, but we're looking at that piece of it, whether that, that part's retracted or not.
It's an impact fee. There's no impact until there's a certificate of occupancy, no. So, would that not be a premature collecting on a?
No, I believe that we collect our fees upfront, or at least 50% upfront. So, whatever we've collected, we've collected pursuant to valid impact fee ordinance and impact fee study, so council has always freed legislators to change that, but we, you know, whatever we collect has been.
Mr. Quintero.
This is Glendale, so I have to ask, how about the impact on our hillside ordinance? How is this ADU gonna fit in with properties here in Glendale that someone may want to engineer an ADU on a, on a hillside? I think we better.
I think the way the law is written, to the extent that they can build an ADU, for example, for the detached, that as long as it meets the 16-foot height limit, 800 square feet, and the four-foot side and rear setbacks, they're gonna be allowed.
With no design discretion?
Correct, they're ministerial. They're ministerial. The only, the only, the only discretion would be is if somebody proposes the construction of the house and the ADU at the same time, but for an existing house, and you know, folks are gonna be able to figure that out, to get their house built, approved first, and then come in for the ADU after. I think that's just the way it's gonna work.
So, obviously with the proper engineering and grading and whatever, it's a feasible enterprise.
And frankly, it was before this, this statute from the 2017 amendments. We saw a significant number of applications come in.
Is that right? Okay.
All right. I think that's it for the questions.
Okay. I'm gonna have David come back, and we'll talk a little bit about where we're going next year.
I will break out my crystal ball. So, once again, we're gonna have housing and land use decision-making back on the plate. SB 50 was a bill that Senator Portantino held in appropriations. We've been told that that bill will be moving forward. This is the bill that, within a quarter-mile, half-a-mile of transportation, you could have a, I'm sorry, this is a part of your PowerPoint, so you could have a five-story building, so that one is coming back. Split role, there is an initiative qualified to have tax commercial properties, different land of Prop 13 than residential, so that will spur a huge debate on taxes in general, and we'll see if the governor wants to engage in, in discussing that. Teachers have an initiative as well to get more money to the classroom, so they've got a number, two or three different proposals that are being floating, floating for signatures. One is an $8 billion one that is a millionaire's tax that tags on to that, that tax source. And then there is also a $15 billion school bond on the, on the March ballot, so that will be coming to the voters in March.
Next up? Yes, Mr. Devine.
I have a question. On the, the Prop 13, the split role, there is a revision that is out there now. Is that the final? Final, will we have another revision on the revision, or is that the final?
Until we know whether signatures are actually gathered, we don't know whether that revision is going to make it, so I know that there.
We need 900,000 or something?
Yeah, they need, they need quite a few signatures, and so every day it gets more expensive to get a signature, so I don't have the deadlines in front of me about when they have to turn in their signatures, but I'm guessing it's gonna be, you know, early spring, that they're gonna have to show up with that, those 900,000 signatures.
Okay.
Mr. Agaganyan.
Would you talk about AB 1763? I don't know if you can remember, density bonus, affordable housing?
Sure. That was a David Chu bill, and, from San Francisco, and his bill says you get extra density bonuses if you have a 100% affordable housing project. So, it has to be entirely affordable, and then you're entitled to.
I think it's 80% density bonus and four incentives.
Four incentives.
So, but that, somebody would have to be able, to be able to make a 100% affordable project pencil out, and I think where you might see that useful is a tax credit project where the housing authority might be involved anyway. But, there is a rumor that some, a neighboring jurisdiction, there will be an application for 100% affordable project, and so we're just kinda waiting to see if that happens.
Thank you.
Did you say neighboring jurisdiction?
In Pasadena.
They're, they're trying to build.
Yeah, allegedly, there's a proposal in the works.
Yeah, we were told, we were told that two weeks ago. Couple other quick things. The PG&E bankruptcy and wildfire debate will suck a lot of the energy out of Sacramento next year as dealing with public power shut-offs and bankruptcy and utilities in general. I guess the good news is all the focus is on the investor-owned utilities, not on public-owned utilities, so they've clearly segregated us. We've done a great job as far as explaining, this isn't a POU problem, this is an IOU problem. So, so far, knock on wood, the debate is not really focusing on our publicly-owned utilities, so we'll, we'll be watching that very closely going forward. Lastly, a couple things. There's going to be initiative on plastics reductions. There was legislation in the hopper last year that didn't make it, so they've, ecology and some environmental groups have started a signature gathering campaign to have a major reduction in plastics in California, phasing out the use of plastic products over time. So, haven't had a chance to read the details of what they're submitting, but I just know it's more robust and more aggressive than the legislation that failed to make it to the governor's desk. And then lastly, the governor did, the new governor did take one page out of Jerry Brown's book, is he remains very fiscally conservative and concerned. He's been throwing wet blankets over all the new spending proposals that he can, and he's been touting that we're in the longest sustained economic expansion ever known to America, and a recession is just around the corner. So, $22 billion surplus this last year that he got to spend. This next, this next year, we'll see what the surplus is. We think it's gonna be significantly less, but we just don't know how, how much less. So, the big policy debate will be the January budget, when he produces the budget, we'll see what further policy directions we're gonna go with the state of California. So, with that, be happy to answer questions. Any further questions?
Mr. Quintero.
Earlier in your presentation, I noticed $300 million for disaster preparedness. That's money that is sort of allocated, or?
Somewhat. This is money that was in the budget from last year. A lot of it goes to what are called the high-fire severity zones up and down the state, where you have a very high likelihood of wildfire. There's a big chunk of the money, it's gonna go to pre-preparation and for vegetation removal and hardening of the system, hardening of the, of the lines. A lot of the money is, was allocated to go out to CAL FIRE or to OES, is the, the Office of Emergency Services or CAL FIRE, to get out on the ground. We were talking with your fire chief earlier today about the possibility of looking at some of those funds. Maybe a little bit more difficult depending on if we're, if parts of your community that are in the high-fire severity zone, because that seems to be the distinguishing factor for a lot of this money, but it is money very specifically to try to fend off future wildfires.
So, there could conceivably be grants that the city of Glendale could apply for?
Yes.
For instance, we have the Glendale Youth Alliance, and build up, just on city property alone, that might be worth investigating.
Yeah, we're, we're watching for different kind of grant funds, both from a vegetation management, tree trimming, that kind of thing, but also from home hardening. There are grants that are gonna be available for homeowners, so in certain cases where they could get funding for, to do projects around their house that may, they may not otherwise be able to afford to do, and these are dealing with some roofing and gutters and things where they can take care of those kinds of things, and those help prevent fires in the future.
And, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, Councilmember Quintero, last week, we actually submitted for a portion of this grant based on what was available to us through the state of California. The chief, along with some of our departments, got together to figure out what may work in terms of what we can submit. At this time, we've submitted for a grant around $300,000. It was about $270,000 based on, again, the, the scope of what could be available to us, and it was for generators, small and large specifically, but the chief is looking very specifically at this whole concept of GYA, the use of GYA employees, to be able to utilize really kind of the, the areas in which, in our hillsides and brush clearance and the, the radius that we have today, can we increase some of those just based on certain areas? So, he is looking at that, and 2020 is the timeframe where we will be focusing quite a bit on, on that program.
Mr. Devine.
Let's see, on the ADUs, new, new structures, new buildings, no solar required?
Not under the ADU, in this round of ADU legislation.
The ADUs, that's what I mean, the ADUs, nothing. What are the, what are the chances of this being changed or tweaked in the, in the coming year? I mean, there are some things on this that especially, and we discussed yesterday, that really kind of perplexed me in the fact that in the junior ADUs, they say that you have to have a cooking facility, but yet you don't have to put a sink in. And I mean, that to me is, is, is crazy.
Yeah.
Okay, I mean, I, I don't know who's writing this, but what are the chances of things like that being tweaked and?
Chances are very high that there will be a cleanup bill. Anytime you have major legislation, you almost always have some kind of a cleanup bill. Whether or not that is true cleanup and it's really making technical changes and fixing, you know, corrections or things like that, or whether that is something broader that deals, gets into more of the policy, I think there will for sure be something small that is tweaking little things. I'm not sure yet if they're gonna see major legislation or major changes, although, you know, as we get closer, I think some of this is, once we hit January 1st, you start to see some of the bumps and things that go, have issues or need to be changed. That's when you typically will see a bill that will show up in February or so where people are, as they're beginning the process of implementation, they may see some things that need changes.
I think another point that, is the fact that these ADUs, whether they be regular or juniors, they do not count towards our REMA numbers.
That's correct.
So, when the state comes out with those new numbers for, for housing and for units, this isn't gonna help us at all.
Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Carpetian.
Thank you. Couple of questions about the ADUs. I found what I was going with on the delay in enforcement, it says, "City shall delay enforcement of a building standard for five years upon request of owner on the basis that correcting the violation is not necessary to protect the health and safety." So, it is five years, it's not six months or so. I knew I read this somewhere. And also to, just to follow up on Ms. Devine's comments, it says, "A city may not, may no longer require a sink with an efficiency kitchen with a maximum waistline of, waistline diameter of one and a half inches." What is an efficiency kitchen? Which kitchen doesn't have a sink? That's what I want to understand.
I think that's the oddest statement. I don't know the rationale behind it. Happy to look into it.
Okay, and this was signed into law when? When did the governor sign these?
On October 13th, on the last date.
October 13th?
It goes into effect on January 1st, 2020.
So, we need to have an ordinance in place by January 1st if you wanna really have something in place, otherwise, all of this will supersede our current, they supersede our current codes anyways, right?
Correct.
So, so it doesn't.
We're looking at whether or not it would make sense to bring something before the calendar year is up, or, you know, keep with the state, the state standards until we can have a broader look at, at ways to regulate it.
So, this will supersede our codes as far as the FAR, some of the setbacks, lot coverage, and height, basically. Parking, which is the most important. And another question is, if you find a responsible person who wants to build an ADU, but with a parking, with a garage attached to it, is that allowed or not?
You mean that they want to keep their parking?
No, if they, if they have room on their property and they build an ADU instead of taking parking away, if they want to build a one-car or two-car garage next to, attached to their ADU, is that allowed? Would that count as, you know, against the FAR or lot coverage and everything else, or it's just a, because we kept talking about if they take one parking away, they don't have to replace it. So, if they take one parking away and they want to build something that replaces not only one, maybe two, is that allowed or not? That's something we need to look into, I think.
We'll look into that.
To encourage people to, you know, that parking is important in general. I mean, yes, we're saying if you're, I think the way it's, we're going is, a bus stop is becoming a major transportation center now. That's how they're interpreting this, many of these issues, but I think that's important to take a look at as well. And that 800, we discussed this for our ADUs when we talked about 500 square feet, clear interior square footage versus 600 square foot exterior square footage, right? How do you measure it? Is it the same way, or it's 800 square feet clear square footage?
If you recall, I think what we did is, that was the issue, so we, our ordinance was 600 feet square, and it's the exterior, so I believe it's the exterior, but we'll look into that as well.
I think we need to look into it, because I know people who want to know, so, because we, we discussed this, 600 square feet, so interior was 500, so.
So, I'd like to bring this back to council. Today, there are people in line in the planning department paying the, paying the impact fees of $10,000. There are people right now designing 500-square-foot ADUs where they'll be able to build much greater than that, and I don't think it's fair for this city to take those fees when this legislation is clearly known to everyone that's gonna be impacted. Now, I may have a conflict on this. I'm a little, you know, for all disclosure, my wife's home, which is separate property, was designed as an, there was an ADU designed on it with the smaller square footage, but more importantly, the impact fees which were paid, and the, the building is not completed yet, there's no certificate of occupancy. Presumably, by the time it's issued, this law's gonna be in effect, and I know that's a, I know, there's a conflict, but I think this council, I won't make them, well, I don't know how far I can go, but I think council should deal with this before the end of the year, so the guy that's right now in line paying $10,000 doesn't say, "Why didn't you guys tell me? Why didn't you warn me?"
Would council like us to bring some information back?
No, I'd like to have it back sooner. I want to, I want to have a decision.
I mean, we're about 60 days away from implementation. Six, 70, where?
Because we waited last time.
80 days away from.
Because we waited last time, because we had a huge load, staff had a huge load that year, and we, we came, came back as an urgency ordinance, and, you know, when it's an urgency ordinance, then you, you don't have time to, anyways, we can always go back and fix it, but I, I don't.
I don't know how far I can go on it, you know? I'm looking to you as the referee to throw the flag and say you've gone too far, because you have a conflict.
Yeah, I, I think at this point, if we just, I hear more than one councilman wanting to bring it back, and we'll discuss your involvement at a later time.
I would second that.
Okay, so, let that be there. Okay, so, let's go back, okay.
One last question, because this one leaves it very vague, basically. With a new proposed single-family home, one ADU and one junior ADU per lot, if exterior access is available and side and rear access setbacks are sufficient for fire and safety. if exterior access is available and side and rear access setbacks are sufficient for fire and safety. I don't know what that number is.
And the state law doesn't define it, so there, I think there's a little room there for the, for, for some local regulation. But that's, that's literally the language in the statute for the, for that particular type of ADU. The other types, it talks about the setbacks and whatnot. But for that type of ADU where you have the junior ADU combined with the ADU and the single family, that's language. So that would require some additional analysis by, by the city and maybe putting in some regulation there.
Okay.
Thank you.
I do have a speaker card. Let me call our speaker up, and we may have some follow up questions. Thank you, Dave and Kira. I didn't mention who the speaker was, but Kathy Yurka is ready to go right on the ball as usual.
Good afternoon, council. And thank you for your presentation. And I want to start by thanking you for what a great job you did on our existing ADU ordinance. I am so angry about these changes. Our ordinance, you worked really hard on it, staff worked really hard on it, members of the community worked really hard on it. It was, you may not know this, a template for other communities that were creating their own ordinances. And it is extremely disappointing to me to see, you know, scarcely after the, the law was passed two years ago and cities began implementing the changes to have it undercut and modified, bill after bill after bill. I did want to say a few things about the ordinance. And I, I wanted to remind you that ADUs are already ministerial. That is not a change with this ordinance. That was part of the two thousand seventeen law. But what local governments were allowed to do was to create reasonable standards and reasonable regulations to guide the development of ADUs. Now, what the state has done is constrain those further, right? So we were six hundred square feet. Now it's eight hundred and fifty or eight hundred. It's sort of puzzling about which it's going to be. But I want to, I want to urge you, we do have some rules that I think are worth maintaining in place. Like, for example, you don't put an ADU in the front yard. There's nothing in the state law that says that you can't do that. And it may be that we would be required to allow one if there's no other place to put it. But right now, you could, under our law, you could, it compels someone to put it in the backyard where it's more or less out of sight. My understanding is that with this new ordinance, any local ordinance is null and void if it does not fully comply with the requirements of the current state law, which ours obviously no longer does. And this means that we would have to approve ADUs ministerially without applying any of our development, landscaping, zoning, or architectural standards. So for example, we can regulate the FAR and lot coverage if someone can build up to eight hundred square feet. But if we don't have that provision in our ordinance, then we can't impose that eight hundred square foot limit because it would just be the state law that would apply. And in fact, my understanding is the state law, if we get rid of our ordinance altogether, if we don't change it, state law is a maximum of twelve hundred square feet for an ADU. That, that people can build up to that or fifty percent of their, of their, their, their property size. So I want to urge you not to just let our ordinance just carry on because it, it doesn't exist at that point. And I would suggest, and I, I know that this is a lot of work for staff and for you, but since you want this to come back anyway, we should once again consider an urgency ordinance. And so that we can make the January first deadline, we had a lot more time in two thousand seventeen. May I be allowed to have a couple more minutes?
One more minute.
Okay, thank you. Los Angeles currently exempts hillside areas for safety reasons because of emergency vehicles. They did that even when they were allowed to, they were allowed to require parking replacement for garage conversions. They're no longer allowed to do that. Glendale should consider the same. We have many streets that are not up to current code in our hillside areas. There's going to be a great deal of additional parking. You are allowed to limit ADUs for fire, for safety and health reasons. When, two years ago, when the ADU ordinance was being debated, I was walking on Hillside Drive and there were cars parked on other, either side of the street. I saw an SUV slowly inching her way between these two parked cars. I stopped and took a photo. The driver rolled down the window. I thought she was going to yell at me. Instead, she said, "Are you taking a photo because of ADUs?" And I said, "Yes," because it would have been impossible for an ambulance or a, a fire truck, I mean, like a fire truck, let alone an ambulance, to get through there. And so I think that this is something that you want to take a look at. We didn't do it two years ago. And I know that eight eighty-one, I heard that eight eighty-one is controlling because of all the bills that flew through. I don't know whether that prescribes that, but if not, these are some of the things that we should be thinking about. It's not like, oh, it's ministerial, anything goes. We still have, you guys still have options and we still have standards that can be applied. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy.
Mr. Quintero?
I think she's made some very good points on the hillside. And is she correct that it, that an ADU can be as large as twelve hundred square feet?
That was actually the law before this law. Now it's, it can be as large as fifty percent as the size of the existing home, is the way I read the statute, so. Yeah, so, and it can be, the maximum size or ADU size is eight hundred and fifty or eleven hundred for, or a thousand for anything with more than one bedroom. So we are, we are looking at all these changes. And, and that issue of whether or not our ordinance is null and void, that's something that there's actually a difference of opinion on. But when we bring this back, we'll kind of give you the, the lay of the land on that, that piece of it when we, we bring back what changes might be appropriate for our ordinance.
Ms. Devine?
And, and you'll look at that, the placement of the ADUs in the front yard. Of course, if, if it's a garage, there's not, not too much we can do.
Right.
But I think that's a good point. And the other one is the safety. Look at the, the safety and the health issues. Like, for instance, in Adams Hill, I mean, that would be a disaster, I think, if someone, if we were allowed to build an ADU up there somewhere. So I think those are good points that should be brought back with the, you know, in the future. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you, Jones Emanuel, for coming out. And you certainly sparked some discussion for the council. We appreciate that. This is a motion to note and file. Will someone make the motion?
Move the item.
Second.
Roll call, please. Councilmember Agagianian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Karpetian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Mayor Najarian?
Yes.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Two would be Director of Community Development and Fire Chief regarding adoption of two thousand twenty Glendale Building and Safety Code. Two-way ordinance for introduction adopting and amending specific portions of the California Building Standards Code as the Glendale Building and Safety Code two thousand twenty. B would be resolution adopting findings and analysis of amendments to the California Building Standards Code, Title twenty-four California Code of Regulations.
Thank you. Ms. Beers?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. We'll go directly to Jan Baer, our building official.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, I'm Jan Baer. I'm the building official. Today, we are introducing our ordinance to adopt the upcoming two thousand twenty Glendale Building Code. Every three years, actually every year, the national code organizations go through and look at different amendments. Every three years, they publish a new code. The, after it's published, the state will go and review those and come up with a state code so that all the jurisdictions are uniform. It gives us a window of six months to adopt our own local amendments. What we're, we look at two different things. One is, do we have amendments that we don't need anymore? And do we need to amend some of the ones we do? So after looking at it by an awesome staff, we came up with the ordinance in front of you. The main ordinances that are changing are we are, we've amended the extension of time for permits and plant checks, which was discussed by council before. We are adding some sections on cloth covered structures to make it easier to provide shading for car washes and playgrounds. We are removing some amendments that we don't think are needed anymore because the state law has changed enough where we're comfortable with them regarding sprinklers and allowable floor area. And emergency egress for windows. We want to promote replacing windows to more energy efficient windows, and we don't want to have increased costs by doing that, so we're removing our amendment. Outside of that, we're, we've just gone through and continued the amendments that we had previously, so.
Okay, it's a thick stack of documents and ordinance. Mr. Karpetian?
Yes, as you mentioned, this is a very heavy document. How, when is it going to come back? If it's introduced today?
November nineteenth.
November nineteenth, so two weeks?
Yes.
Okay, so I, I would like to have some briefings before, before that date because there are items in here, like the shipping containers, that I don't know where is it going to go? How's it going to be used? And I don't know if I'm for it or not, but I don't have an opinion one way or the other. But I want to make sure that, I want to understand why is it even in our code today? Because I haven't received anything that there is a demand for it. But again, I want, I want to understand. I know the ones that are, come from the state or the federal government, it's, we can't change it. But the ones that is being changed locally, I want to understand what they are.
The, with respect to the shipping containers, the local jurisdictions through a combining of efforts came up with those standards simply for the fact that people have been asking about them in many jurisdictions. And we wanted to be more uniform so that they knew what they needed to bring, which regardless of what city. Long Beach has done a lot of work on them. And so it's mainly, you would look at a shipping container as a two by four. It's just a structural product. And these standards tell us how we structurally alter that if it's approved for use by some other mechanism. But the standards that we're including are strictly the structural standards.
Okay, we'll discuss because I, I want to understand when you say structural products, where can it be used? Is it going to be used as a residential use? As a, as a, you're going to be able to, to use that in residential areas for an ADU? Can you use it for commercial areas only? I, I want to understand where we're going with this thing because it's, it wasn't built to be occupied, basically. Those are shipping containers, so.
I have a general question. So in this new updated ordinance, and just in general, are we moving more and more towards sprinkling, making that something that, to me, I find it super important, so new construction?
The city has been in the lead in sprinkling and requiring it since nineteen eighty-five in all new buildings. And so our new proposal is just as strong as it always was.
And how about major remodels, whether it's residential or multifamily? Are we there yet, or?
Yes, it actually contains amendments. Well, if they do over fifty percent valuation change to a building, we can require full compliance with the entire new code.
Then the next question is, how about manufactured units? More and more apartments, hotels nationwide are moving towards the prefabs that are brought into place. Where are we on that?
Modular units are actually approved by the state, by the Department of Housing and Community Development. They get a statewide approval. Local jurisdictions, we look at the foundations. But we actually accept the plans from the state. So if somebody gets a state approval and goes through that, we're basically going through the review of discretionary actions like design review and things like that. And then we're also looking at the structural connection of those units and how they are placed on a foundation.
Yeah, we had, we had that AC hotel, right, on Colorado? Is, is it still in works or what happened to that?
I understand it's still in works.
Oh, yeah? Okay, good.
No, we went through the.
They're using that modular.
Much more efficient way to build and quality control and, and everything else.
Yes.
Okay, is there a motion?
I'll move the item.
We have, we have an ordinance for introduction, so someone gets to introduce it. Thank you, Ms. Devine. And we have a resolution adopting the findings. Do we take the resolution at this point?
Take the resolution at the time we bring the ordinance back for adoption.
So that will conclude our business for, for this item. Thank you, Jan. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Okay, the special meeting is adjourned. And we have a regular meeting of the Glendale City Council for November fifth, two thousand nineteen. May we have roll call? Councilmember Agagianian?
Present.
Devine?
Here.